So just as a reminder, this is a board work session and no decisions will be made this evening. This is, no minutes are taken at work sessions. No commitments are made by the board during work sessions. This is purely an information exchange. And the objective here is to identify questions, some of which we can, we may be able to answer ourselves. Because we have had some extensive discussion with Damian Viele, our attorney, with VF Law. Some questions I already know we're going to have to take back to him to answer. I'd also make comment that one of our very generous owners has gone through and done editing. A review and we know there are lots of typos and interesting problems with the name of our association. That we have to grapple with. There's inconsistency of tidling. All of that we're prepared to fix. And so what, what this will lead to is probably a final draft sometime after Labor Day. That will, owners will have ample time to review and send us comments and whatnot. But then we will vote to adopt the new policies and the new roles, rules and regulations. The September 25th board meeting, which is also devoted to budget. But by that time, I'm hoping it's pretty much a simple process of approving. We will have been through more questions, iterations and whatnot. So, so as you can tell, I assume you can see the screen, all of the policies and the rules and regulations combined are 72 pages long. And I don't think we have any intent on going through those page by page. In my email, I suggested the most important documents are the appendix A to the policy for conducting a meeting and the rules and regulations. So if there's a burning question or comment on somewhere else, we can, we we can handle that, but I'd suggest we, we work through those two key documents. Unless somebody has other, other ideas.
I have no other ideas. That would be great. There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff here.
Yeah. So, so the intention of exhibit A is to self impose notice to owners. It's interesting in the regulatory environment for board meetings. Not member meeting, the annual member meeting, but, but our, our board meetings. We're supposed to have a schedule that we produce of when we're going to meet during the year. But we're not obligated to stay with that schedule. And there is, there are notice requirements to board members, but there are technically no notice requirements to owners. Since I've lived here in, from 2012 through my first tenure as board president. I think the standard practice was to give at least 10 days notice for a board meeting. And you would see it at the kiosk and there would be email and whatnot. And, and some of the longer term owners here are welcome to correct me on that. But that was, that's my recollection of how we did things. In the time we have been with CCG, there have been numerous instances where they would meet with virtually no notice. And, and in specific, this budget meeting of last October, 2024. I think it was a secret meeting because there was no notice. Some of it, some owners got wind of it, myself included, asked to be included in the meeting. And it wasn't a board work session because they voted to, to approve the budget. So it wasn't, it was a formal board meeting, but it was done in secret. And so to make a long winded story as short as possible. We have mechanically tried in this document to self impose a 10 day period for regular board meetings. So that's the paragraph that we're looking at right here. And we've had two different attorneys working with us on this. Both have expressed concern about committing to this. But our most recent attorney understands that we are picking between two possible disadvantages. One disadvantage is we failed to give this 10 day notice. And there's some problem then with what is legally done at that meeting. And so you can, you can catch yourself up with that. The other disadvantage of course is we go back to having secret meetings and, and, and so I felt we came up with a good compromise in having a shorter period of notice of five days for special board meetings. And those are single topic meetings typically. And we've made good use of those this year, I believe, and appropriately so. So I think, I think we hit the ground right, but, but, and a future board can change this policy at their leisure. But I, I think at least they would have to go through and, and, and proactively say, we're going to go back to our, our way of doing things with CCG and not follow the longer history of our HOA. So that's the first comment I would make. And does anybody have any thoughts? If not, we'll roll on.
I'm good.
So
Not me.
So we also have this provision that says, in the event we have an emergency matter and the five days notice is not possible, the board will make a reasonable effort to provide as much notice as possible for an emergency special board meeting. So if we had a fire and we need to grapple with votes to submit an insurance claim and that kind of stuff, we're, we can, we're not even held to the five day deal if it's an emergency matter. So. Uh, the next thing that I feel like was important that emanated from the conflict we started with this year was, was a really severe misunderstanding of what a work session is. And most associations don't define what a work session is. Everybody uses them, but they, but they don't define them. Kyla has some language about what a work session is, or at least there's guidance about it. And, and so I, and, and those three things are stipulated in A, B, and C. I added a fourth, which is that owners are permitted to attend work sessions. And, and we'd make every effort to let owners know we're having a work session. Sometimes when you're doing a walk around with a vendor, that's going to be impossible to schedule. But that rarely happens. Work sessions would be when, when the whole of the board is together and we're doing something. So I would consider me walking around with our cement guy for a final review of the work to be a work session. Gary and Doug aren't there. So anyway, I think, I think this would help, this will help. Moving forward to have this institutionalized, that there's no private meetings at Peachtree. Board members can't agree to do things on the side and, and keep it quiet. And we're all going to quote unquote, have each other's backs. No, no. The only confidential private meetings are executive sessions. And any board member can go after a, a, a work session and give their opinion of what happened to owners and express concern and do whatever they want. And, and so I, I, I hope that the conflict that started my tenure on the board would be less likely to happen with this being so explicitly spilled out, spelled out. And then the final things that we did with this was make it clear the process for an action without a meeting. And again, we got into trouble with that because we had a board member abstain from a vote. And that's a formal vote. And then a couple of weeks later say, I've changed my mind. I don't want to have that matter be a decided outside of a meeting. And that triggered, okay, then we have to put it off to the next meeting. I think that was a wrong decision. And, and it was wrong for CCG to make that. They shouldn't be making procedural decisions. So in these documents, you'll see that the board president is the, is the, as required by Kyla is the chairperson of meetings and would make all procedural decisions like that. But in the, in any case, the process for action without a meeting is, 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 is very clear, I believe, with this, this section. And then finally, we recognize that we have committees and they would operate under the same policies that the board operates under. They, they are actually committees of the board, even though the board may not sit on, so. So not hearing any comments about that. So I'm going to move on to the rules and regulations then. And hopefully that's not too small a print. Is that okay? Can people see this? Okay. Or do you want me to zoom it a little bit more?
A little larger would be good.
Okay. How's that?
Great.
That's easier. Yeah. Thanks.
So one of the most common problems I think we have encountered this year is with owners is people don't understand what they own and what they don't own. And I, I, we're stuck with these terms in our covenants that are problematic. But, but these three things are, are, are designed to define what you own, what you don't own. And so you own your condominium unit. That is the airspace of an individual unit. We, we, I think this is commonly referred to as studs in that we own the interior of our unit. And then there is a limited common area and, and that's reserved for an area that is for the exclusive use of the, of the owner. And that would include the patio, the entrance porch, privacy fences, balconies, garages and garage aprons. And it only includes those things. So
Not, I'm sorry, not the, not the driveway?
It, it includes the garage aprons driveways. Yes. So you have control over your driving. Yes.
Okay.
So they call it garage aprons. We put in parents driveways.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. You certainly want, you don't want anybody parking in your driveway because it, it's a common area.
It's An example of something that people think they have the right to control, and, and we've certainly let them do that is the backfill area that people plant things in and put decorations on. That, that is not a limited common area. So if you, if you want to put a plant in, in, in the interior gravel behind your sidewalk, technically that ought to be submitted as a, as a, as an ARC request to the board or the committee that runs those for approval. But we've had owners think their walls, exterior walls they own. We've had owners think they, that the grass around their property is their, is that they own and they will not allow things or demand things to be done a certain way and, and they have no basis for that. So. And then the common area is, is obviously we all, we all own one seventieth of it. There are 70 units. And, and, and the common area is anything that is not a condominium unit or, or, or a limited common area. So. So I'm going to quit talking and ask if people have any questions as they because I'm assuming people reviewed this prior to the meeting and I want to reward that effort by saying, what questions do you have? Before I go further. And, and I'm going to unmute us, everybody. There's, nobody's joining. So I think we're a small enough group that and it is your choice to unmute. So up to you. So, but please feel free to just speak your mind. So. One thing that's going to be very different is that we're going to have to have each unit that has a wood fireplace have a certification that they'll do at the annual meeting each year. Or if a new owner comes in, they'll do it when they become a new owner. That they will have to say, I'm promising, I'm not going to use it. Therefore I don't need to have it inspected, or I do plan on using it. And each year they'll have to have an inspection. That's, that's new from our, our insurance. Not just the insurance we're using, but many insurers have adopted that standard. The, the other thing the board decided at our June meeting is that we would add cleaning dryer vents to the HOA's cost next year because we have to have our dryer vents inspected and cleaned every year. And it is we, we get it at a much lower cost. It'll be about $3,500 versus the units in the stacked unit building. If they individually contract for that, they're looking at $400 plus cost from our preferred contractor. So we just decided in June, we're going to, we're going to build that into the budget next year. So.
Stephen, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely, Linda.
On the dryer vents then, are you going to be able to make arrangements with all 70 owners to have the contractor in their homes? Cause it has to be cleaned from the inside out to the top of the roof, right?
We, we have not verified that yet, but we're going to use Doc Super Vac, who I think you have used and you, you, you know. I don't recall, we had them clean our dryer vents three years ago, something like that. I don't recall, but you, I, I trust you that, 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 yeah, that, that may be how.
Yes, they have, they absolutely do. They pull it out, they take off the hose and they clean it from the inside out. And then they get up on the roof and clean it as well.
So every owner is going to have to facilitate that process. I, 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 I think that it's unnecessary for us to specify that, but I'm open to, to putting that in as a question that maybe we should in this bullet point, that owners must accommodate any inspection required in the interior of their unit. So.
Stephen, I had just a couple of notes that I wanted to maybe bring, call attention to. One is under the windows and doors that need replacement. It says owners will be required to replace them within 30 days of notice to do so. And I think that might be a little bit tight since that will require an ARC approval for the windows. And elsewhere in these documents, ARC has up to 30 days to review. And in my case, when I got my windows approved and then ordered, it took about another 30 days to get the window ordered and installed. So 30 days might be a little bit tight on that section.
Before I, I go to that section, let, let me just ask again, on this section. Do we need some enforcement requirement or are people feeling like, no, we already have it? Owners must provide access to their condominium, condominium, nevermind. Kathy, what, what page are you looking at for the windows?
Well, I'm looking at my copy.
I think I found it.
It's at the very, yeah, because mine repaginated. Remember when I
Right.
It's probably like three, maybe three.
Yeah, no, I think I have it on screen right now.
Okay.
So do we think that that should be 60 days or 45 days or?
More than 30. If, if the ARC can get their work done sooner than 30 and not every company, like I ordered windows for my entire house. I didn't just order a window. So maybe they could get it in sooner. I don't know. 45 might be reasonable. 60 would be an outside.
Changing it to 45.
Okay. And then the other question I had is many months ago, when we were having discussion of enforcement of rules. It was pointed out that we couldn't enforce the existing rules because they were not signed by the board or by the president. So do we need to add a signature block at the end of the rules and regs?
You know, that, that opinion I think came from Amanda Ashley, our previous, previous attorney. And so I'm adding a question for Damian to that. I don't recall the rules and regs ever having signature, but I, I
They were never, no, they were never signed before.
But Gary, Doug, correct me, isn't that something we heard from Amanda at one point? I don't know who else would have told us that, but I, I think that Amanda expressed that concern. Anyway, I'm putting it down as a question for Damian. So. And, and if they do, we'll add a signature block. What makes me think is they don't have to be, that they just have to be ratified by the board is that he didn't put a signature block in, but who knows? So here's where we tried to again, get more precise to what is a limited common area and make it clear that that area inside the sidewalk or on rocked areas is not your, is not a, a limited common area. It's, it's a common area. So. The parking and towing policy is all text that is new to us and is required as a result of, I think legislative change as late as, as this last year that they made a, a different change to it. So it requires specific signage and where it's posted and processes. Apparently HOA's got really aggressive with towing and using wheel locks on vehicles and stuff. And so the legislature has stepped in several times in the last few years. But I've also been told we cannot not have a towing policy, which makes sense to me. If we have a vehicle that has been abandoned, we, we need to be able to grapple with it. So.
Have we ever enforced the towing or, or one of our towing regulations that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We did have a vehicle that, that had been parked without permission this last year for weeks on end. And we did find out who owned it and were ready to, and put, you know, big stickers, you know, notices on the windows that it was going to be towed, but we had no ability to do so.
What do you mean you had no ability? We don't, we weren't allowed to do that?
Our towing policy was not up to date and we could not tow it. We didn't have the signs. We had no, no towing company would come in and remove it based upon our lack of a current policy and the right signs.
Now, there are, there are rules and regulations that exist in the city, you know, that are enforced by the city on the city streets?
Yes.
And we don't, we don't fall under that category?
No, no, we, we are, we, it's interesting. If you look at Google Maps, our streets have names. So, but, but no, these are private streets. So we fall under the, the policies that have been adopted for them. So.
Have we ever had anybody like park RVs and boats and stuff in the, in these private, in these extra parking lots that we had to do something about?
I'm going to say since I've lived here, we have had an owner that had an RV and he was very circumspect about notifying the board that he wanted to have it here for a couple of days to load up for his camping adventure and was very careful to, to not abuse it. I, I don't think we've had a problem with RVs.
I mean, so we're somewhat flexible. If somebody for some reason needs to bring a boat in here for a day or two or three or an RV for a day or two or three, if they, they let us know that that's happening. We, what, what's our, our stance on that?
I think it's this sentence right here, Gary, that owners may park an RV in the north parking area for 40 hours to the extent space is available and permission is first obtained from the association.
Okay. Good enough.
And, and I think that would apply to a boat or, you know, and of course a boat, if you have it on your driveway, it's just fine. It just can't be permanently there. But if you have a boat that you have on your driveway for a couple of days or something like that, that's fine.
And if you have one in your garage, it could stay there forever, right?
Absolutely. You can keep your catamaran in your garage or your jet skis or whatever you want in your garage. We, we took out the specific date reference to the trash because we think that's always going to be subject to change. So. So we just, in our current regs, there's a specific date that says it's picked up on Wednesdays and stuff, and I, we got rid of that.
I have a question. Going back to Kathy's question on the windows.
Yep.
What if? Yeah, it says owners will be required to replace them within 30 days. What if it said owners will be required to initiate replacement within 30 days? That would mean an ARC and ordering them and whatever. And then that would cover any delays that came up.
I, I, I think that's fine too. Rather than having a specific, rather than them within 40 days.
If they could show proof that they did put the application into ARC and they have proof that the orders, that the windows are ordered. Sometimes you, you're right. Sometimes you have no control over when the windows will come in. You know, but as long as, as long as we know that, that it's being done, I think we should be okay with it.
I like that change. Owners will be required to initiate replacement within 30 days of notice to do so.
Yeah. And show, and show proof of it too.
Yeah.
We might want to put in their ARC and/or window order, ordering or some, you know, a couple of different forms
Yeah.
Of proof.
I think, I think you should have both the ARC and the order. Cause you could put it, you could put a, an ARC application in and wait three or four weeks to put the order in.
Yeah.
Hey, I've done that. Good.
But along those lines, Gary, sometimes people are hesitant about placing the order until the ARC is approved. Because there are some windows that should not be approved.
I, I understand that, but within 30 days, if you should be able to get approval from the ARC and order the windows. You know, you, you, you already know what windows you want before you put the application into the ARC. Cause you have to show them what windows are being installed. So you already know what windows you want. Once it's approved, you, you mean our ARC would take 30 days to approve something like that? I don't think so.
Well, that's how long they've had in the past to approve an ARC is 30 days, the board.
We've been faster than that. And in fact, we've had windows installed this year that were not installed with an ARC.
Well, that's not right either.
No, because we ended up with some wrong windows. So it's not.
Well, I'm thinking of other windows that were installed without an ARC. So. But they're white.
Well, they don't stick out like a sore thumb for sure, right?
Yeah. I got a question the other day about whether smoking is, is allowed outside on someone's patio. And, and the, and the technical answer is no.
So where, where is smoking allowed on this property? Nowhere on the property?
In the interior of condominium units.
In the interior?
Yeah. But we've never enforced this. Now where it rises to an issue is that if, you know, you have any smoking device or cigarettes or whatever, that becomes a nuisance smell to another owner, then you got a problem. So.
Right. I, 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 I get that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not a smoker. I'm, I'm not a smoker, but I don't, I don't like it either, but you know, if I looked out my back window and somebody was in the field down there tapping a cigarette, I mean, it wouldn't appall me, that's for sure.
Well, and, and that's not our property, so that wouldn't come into play, but, but, um, you know. I suspect we will continue to only enforce these rules when, when something can't be resolved. Cause you can go around to every unit and find something that's being done routinely that's not consistent with our current rules and regs.
Sure, absolutely.
Including everybody on this call.
Include, but not me.
Oh, Gary. Um, we did make it explicit that owners should not be hand watering the grass without the approval of the association. So. Again, it would have to get pretty obnoxious and out of hand where they're wasting water that we would step in, so. That's the rules and regs.
The only thing I'd like to say about rules and regs is it's not going to do us any good to have them if they're not enforced. Otherwise, we shouldn't have wasted any money. So, and I know it's hard being on the board. You don't want to become a police officer. But at the same time, why do we have rules and regs if they're not going to be enforced? So. I just guess I, that's just my thought.
To your point, Linda, when I was first on the board, just as a board member in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, somewhere along in that line, um, the attorney that was being used by Kathy Lauterbeck's company, I can't remember the name of that company, uh, in any way. Touchstone, is it? Yeah, that's right. We went from Touchstone to Onsite. Yeah, anyway. Touchstone, they had said if you inconsistently enforce your rules and regs, then, then you can't enforce them at all. If an owner can say, oh, you've now said you're going to require that I clean up the oil spill uh, in the parking area that I'm using, but I can show that you have let plenty other owners get away with consistent violations. You, you, you can't enforce that on me. And, and that stands to reason. I, I just don't know where you draw the line because we could go around right now and come up with forty violations in a half hour.
Well, hopefully you would have a conver, I mean, I don't think you should like suck, sick the police or the big bad dog on anybody, but I do think just a civil conversation. Most people, I hate to say it, me included, maybe I'm doing something that's right, not right. I don't know. But all I need to do, if it's something that is not in the rules and regs, somebody talk to me about it and I'll correct it or else, you know, I guess what is, what is going to be the result if somebody parks where they're not supposed to park? I mean, what is, do they get a slap on the wrist? Is there a fine? It doesn't seem like there's any consequences for not following the rules. So why do most people? I mean, I know we've got plants sitting on top of patio walls. We've got, you know, all kinds of things still. So like I keep saying, why do we have rules and regs if we're not going to enforce them? But then if we enforce them, what are the cons, consequences if they don't follow what the rules and regs say? And they just continue bad behavior. I mean, it seems like we need to have an answer.
And well, I've taken the approach that we should do gentle nudging. We should say, hey, you know, you, you really can't do that. And so that's the approach I've taken and I've been surprised, for example, the, that this year, the compliance on not leaving garage doors open for ventilation has been phenomenally good compared to previous years. And I don't know if that's just random or if people actually saw in the newsletter that they're not supposed to do that, but that's, that's, that's something that I have gently said, by the way, and, and gotten pushed back saying, I can't, my garage has to be ventilated. And I said, okay, just trying to tell you that technically we have a problem with garage doors being open. They create an unsafe environment for us and we get vermin in. And then it becomes a pest issue that the HOA has to pay for. And so technically, we prefer you not do that, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take a picture and do a violation.
Well, again, this is a very small association, a very small community, so we would have to, uh, patrol and enforce all of these rules and regulations ourselves. And, uh, you know, these are our neighbors. These are people that, that, that we live with. So it's, it's a very touchy, difficult situation. Um, and yeah, the gentle nudge is a good approach, but as Linda said, what, what are the consequences? You know, are, are we, are we writing out summonses? Are we sending fines? I mean, who, who wants to do that?
Well, just as a reminder, CCG is supposed to have an inspection team through here monthly, and I don't think they've had a team here since December. So in my last weekly president report, I, I ask, are we paying for that and shouldn't be? Or what's the deal? Because.
Well, that makes it, that makes it a totally different animal now. Now you've got, now you've got CCG or a management company who is doing the patrolling and doing the enforcing. It's not the association that's doing it. It's somebody that we pay to, pay to do. And if we are paying them to do it, then they should be doing it.
And that's apparently a recommended best practice. We've talked with a couple of other management companies and been told the board can express concerns about something to the management company, but the management company should be going around and doing inspection. But we have, for example, white garage doors that are impermissible for years. And I think that's something we probably ought to step up this year and say, need to get those taken care of. And here's the cost our painter will do for those if you want to use our painter, but you know, they, they don't look right and we ought to.
Well, they don't look right. They don't fit, you know, they don't, it's not conforming, so.
Well, we'll give you another one that we can talk about at some point, and that is speeding. Almost nobody follows the ten mile per hour speed limit.
Right. Well, these are.
Frankly, I'm surprised we haven't had a pedestrian or bicycle car incident, given really how fast some people drive through here.
And, and you know, at this time of year especially, people, there's a lot of people walking their dogs, walking the, I know, I walk the streets. You know, a lot of us are, you know, will walk along the side of the street or sometimes in the middle of the street. At a ten mile an hour speed limit, you should be able to do that.
Yep.
And have plenty of time to get out of the way.
And another issue, barking dogs. You know, so we have several places where the dogs are not just barking a little bit, but barking a lot, so.
So are you going to get that clarified from CCG then, Stephen?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I have a formal inquiry to CCG that they did not answer. And this week I said, really want an answer to that.
And then if they do the comply, the compliance part, what are their, what is their fee, fine structure? When they find these things?
Well, our, our fine structure is in our enforcement policy.
Okay.
I'm gonna go look at that if you want.
That means compliant, that means compliance issues as well. Cause more than likely, I mean, I got a nasty gram one time from the property management company over something. They usually typically warn you like one time or two times or something. And then, you know, three strikes and you're out or you get a twenty five dollar fine or whatever. It would be nice to have that clarified as to what, what, what they do about that, the consequences.
It, it's, it, it, it is in this section, uh, page, starting on page thirty eight. Um, and, and we did. So, so there's a process here where there's an initial notice and you have thirty days to cure and there's no fines. And then if you go and there's continued fines and so forth, um, that, that that process takes place. And then there's a fine, a schedule for, for violations. The one, the one thing that, that is different with our new attorney is that, um, a barbecue grill on a patio is a public safety or health, and that's a seventy two hour notice to cure. So if something is going to violate our insurance and is, is indeed a public safety or health matter, our, our new attorney says, of course, a barbecue grill inappropriately that could jeopardize your insurance in and of itself. And with the history of barbecue grills starting fires in HOAs, that, that's, that's definitely a seventy two hour provision, so. But I, I, that, that, that whole process is spelled out in detail. And I, I think to CCG's credit, they really do understand the process. What I looked at when I first came, became president was the history of their violations and it just seemed bizarre. I think they had one where they sent a, a notice saying that their team had been out and they had noticed a small bowl of water that was out and that was impermissible and they sent a letter to that owner. And those letters now come, I think are required to go by certified mail, so you have to pay for the mail cost. So that one to me was silly.
Well, I think the thing that's going to be hard for CCG's compliance team to regulate is going to be the parking because they're not going to know that. I'm just giving an example. We've got ten vehicles sitting in parking spaces within the property because all of their, their garage is all full and they don't have room for it. So CCG isn't going to know that kind of thing. When they're supposed to use Carlton, if, if they can't use their garage, I guess they can use one parking space. But aren't they supposed to use the garage first? And if your garage is full of leftovers or whatever, then do you still get to just park one car in, in guest parking? Or, I mean, that's probably the biggest issue.
We, we have had a request to take out the reference to Carlton that, um, and make it generic, oversight vehicles must be parked elsewhere, um, because we've had some owners say, don't encourage people to park in front of my house. And not, not just the units that have a door facing. We've heard that from owners that, that, you know, be generic there. Um, the, the, the rules I think are problematic when we use should. Uh, that's not something consistent with, uh, rules and regulations. So I, I think we addressed that in the, the new text here about, um, I don't think we have a provision that says, uh, that, that you should first use your garage. What we did, um, so I, I, we either took that out or modified it. I can't remember how that, what we played with that. But it's very hard, um, to get this right. We had a definition of a pickup as being anything that was larger than a quarter ton, and there are no quarter ton pickups. Or if they are, they're very few in number, you know, so. So I think we changed that to a more reasonable definition. Um, we've had owners parking commercial vehicles on the property, um, that, that I don't think have been a problem that we haven't had complaints about. So I think we've tried to be a little bit more, um, definitive, um. Yeah. So here we, here we went with over one half ton. That used to be a quarter ton. Um, we're talking about really obnoxious, but if somebody's got a window cleaning business and, and they park on their driveway and it says Fred's Window Cleaning, I don't think that's a problem. If they're parking a two ton flatbed truck that says Fred's Trucking, that gets a little obnoxious, so.
Stephen, if you scroll down a little bit towards the end of that parking section, there's a bullet that's kind of what Linda's referring to. Due to limited parking spaces within Peachtree HOA residents must first park cars and pickups in their garages or driveways if large enough to accommodate said vehicle. If an open parking space exists, one additional vehicle may be parked in one of the undesignated spaces within the complex. Any additional.
That may be where it's changed. I think we have should in the current regs and we changed it to must.
Right. I'm just saying that's where it addresses first in their garage, then in their driveway, and then one open space.
But if their garage is full, then they use the excuse that they do have it full with one car, but the other half is full, so they think that they're okay with parking another car in the guest parking. So.
I think we're going to have a really hard time grappling with that. And the only answer that I've been able to think of is that if it becomes so problematic that adequate guest parking is not available, we may need to set aside and, and we should think about this soon because our, our company that's coming to do our restriping and painting will be here next month. If there are spots that we want to reserve for visitors, we, cause I think this, this parking spot across from me, we will have the word visitor on that spot. If there are some spots that are, you're thinking about where, where the, the, there's no owners are inappropriately, uh, occupying that space and denying other owners its, its fair use. Then, then I, I think we need to put a visitor tag on, on it, on some spots would be my quick thought about it. I think that's a better way of doing it rather than trying to write some violation that you have too much in your garage and therefore we're writing you a violation for not having a, a garage that you can occupy. I, I feel like it's a better answer is my thought to say, oh, here are some spots that we have, we have plainly marked for visitors. They're not to be occupied by owners.
Well, we should have that any, we should have that anyway. We should have.
Well, I think we should. The spot that I'm looking out my office window at directly across from me at the hedge, you know, has, has typically been a visitor spot. It hasn't been the domain of an, of an individual owner, so. So I, I was thinking.
Go ahead.
I, I was thinking we would have the, the lamp, the company that's going to do the restriping actually put visitor in large print on some of those spots that are like that, so.
I guess what it comes down to is you're always going to have a few owners. It's not going to make any difference if it's planters on top of the patio walls, the parking, whatever. If they don't want to follow the rules, they're just not going to follow the rules. You can have all of the policies in place you want. They're not going to do it.
That's the ba, that's the basic rule of thumb for, for everything in life.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, not everybody is going to pay attention and listen. But if we have our management company enforcing these rules and regulations, it, it, it may send a message, especially if we start fining them after their second warning or whatever. I mean, who, who, you know, if, if there's a consequence, yes, but I don't believe that we, the board, should have to enforce that. We're not police officers. We're not here to do that. And we, and we also live here. If we have our management company do it, they don't live here and that's their job. This is what they do. They get paid to enforce our rules and regulations.
And any owner can send to the management company a picture of something that they believe is inconsistent with our rules and regulations and ask that violation team to look at it the next time they come out.
That's, that's the other, that's the other flip side to this whole thing. If some, somebody is doing something that is not in our rules or and it's not bothering anybody, then it's like, you know, if a tree falls in the woods and nobody's there, nobody hears it. So if there's something going on here and nobody's bothered by it, then what's the difference? It's not bothering anybody. But if, if it's in your face and it bothers you, then you have every right to call the management company and, and complain about it.
Yep. Um, we are at six fifty PM. Are there any other things in these seventy two pages? I, I know, for example, um, if you read the policy on flags and signs, there's language there that's all messed up. Um, we've made note of that, but is there anything else that confused people as they looked at the whole of the document that they wanted to have us talk about? Here are none. Here and then. Gary, you look like you're about to say something.
No, I'm about to fall asleep is actually what I'm doing. Uh, I I am going to say I'm I'm kind of hungry. I want to go, so if we've got nothing else to go over, I'd say we're done.
I think we're done. Thank you so much, everybody.
Bye.
All right. Take care.